All the ball.
Burr.
Here.
McGinn.
Here.
Sines.
Here.
Marmen.
Here.
Pickpuff.
Here.
Stucker. Ray.
Here.
Page number two, approval of agenda. Any changes, Your Honor? No change. Motion to approve.
Second.
All the roll.
McGinn.
Yes.
Sines.
Yes.
Marmen.
Yes.
Pickpuff.
Yes.
Stucker.
Yes.
Ray.
Okay, number three, presentation petitions, other communications. A downtown presentation. Ames Economic Development Commission.
Evening, next slide, members of the Aix City Council. Ames. Boone City Council. Excuse me. It's been a beer night. That'll be last time we see you. Make sure to get back. It's good to be with you. We've got a couple of handouts for the industry. And we're going to do three things tonight. You can take as long or as little as you want. First and foremost, as the state's on the agenda, we are going to talk about the downtown survey that we conducted probably, probably seven, eight weeks ago. That was a great exercise. It was fun. There were some of us that walked around downtown Boone, Martin, and Brenda will talk a little bit about that. We're also going to provide a quarterly report for our contract with the city of Boone, providing you an update since of the activities that I think one of the most fascinating is that we've done all of our business retention and expansion calls, the BRE calls on your major employers. Why that's important is that the state of Iowa, the Iowa Economic Development Authority, and the utility partners across the state really encourage local economic development groups to get down on the ground, to talk to your industries, make sure they're doing all right, make sure you're moving impediment to their growth and their expansion here in Iowa versus someplace else. And so, once, probably once a month, we give a map of the states that out with us, and it highlights the counties where they're making progress. And I'm thrilled to tell you that Boone County is, I think, as dark as it can be as it relates to progress. We've made all the calls on your behalf. And I think it might have been the first time, maybe, I don't know that for certain, but Boone and Story County where people work is far ahead of pace of the rest of the state. Dubuque's really good at their stuff, too. Dubuque County's got most of their calls done as well. And so, we pride ourselves in that because we totally do that. And we've got some really, really good feedback about a number of opportunities for business growth, job growth, and capital investment here in the morning. So, we're going to talk a little bit about kind of that quarterly update. And finally, you know about all the money that's been coming out of Washington DC here while we're on your programs related to the recovery from COVID. There's a community development block grant money that Bill and I discussed, and maybe you folks have already had a little bit of a conversation about that. Brenda's going to dig in a little deeper into that as well today with you. But again, we're here as long or as little as you like, so, once again, we're grateful for the partnership. We feel like we're off to, still, we're still off to a fast start. We both stay over here a lot. We enjoy that, and enjoy working with you. I'm going to turn it over to Brenda. Thank you.
Welcome evening, Boone council and interested citizens. I want to make sure you have two, two handouts. So, there's actually two. I'm going to start our comments tonight with the results of the downtown survey. And if you want to follow along, it's the side of the flyer that highlights that. So, Dan mentioned that we have seven of our staff. We targeted 106 businesses. I was surprised by that number when we saw the full number. We actually completed surveys at 43 of your businesses. And a couple of things I want to highlight, and again, this is just hearing the voice of your customer. We asked them on a scale of one to five to rate some community amenities. And one of the things we did with all of the surveys was actually identify some customized questions in addition to kind of the standard questions we ask when we do business surveys. But the highest ranked item was really 4.22, considering it's our downtown businesses. You shouldn't be surprised that that ranked highest, the downtown communication and enhancement. So, I know there's lots of chatter around that, and so that scored the highest of things. And again, I think the parks is important to that group as well. There's a question about housing. We asked that also during the full BRE visits. And again, it's just as a position there, we don't go into a whole lot of depth. But really, again, about looking at that number, so 81% of the respondents felt like work could be done to accommodate all new and available things for workforce housing. So, again, a number I'd highlight there. We've identified leases, loans, who's looking to retire, and how many have plans to renovate. So, if you jump down to the three white boxes in this category, you've got, you know, three programs that will support your local downtown businesses and their efforts to enhance their operations. So, you can see the utilization, the folks that were going to answer that question, utilization of that program. Also, we did the asking technology question. I know, you know, I heard that, you know, that technology in some parts of the community, they'd like to see that enhanced. You can see that, those numbers there. I also think highlighting the strengths and the weaknesses of the downtown area, so strong local customers, local support, reasonable and flexible regulations. I highlight that. That, again, you know, taking down hurdles instead of putting them up is important. And they feel really good about the geographical location of the communities. So, that's really where we're at with the survey. And again, I think that it's important to continue to follow up the survey so you can watch progress. And it kind of are those numbers moving? We've highlighted available downtown resources, and those are programs that are available through the state. But I'd really like to focus your attention on really the special funding opportunity that's available right now through the Iowa Economic Development Authority. And so, I did, we did our best to consolidate information that was probably in a fifty or sixty slide presentation and even longer rolls. And so, something of this interests you, please convey that to Bill. We're here to work on your behalf and help you come to it to these funding programs of the state. So, the big thing to keep in mind is that there are seven allowable project areas, so you can, you can take a look at those, the things that you're looking to fund with this special round of funding. The key ones is, is that the city must be the applicant. So, a good example of this is, let's say you have a daycare center that's wanting to expand. They cannot be the applicant. They would need to work with the city in order to get funding. So, that's, that's really key that only the city or the county can be the applicant. You have to somehow have a link to COVID-19. And so, we can help brainstorm that a bit. We can cite some of the examples they used in that. There has to be a consideration of low to moderate income. And so, in some of the instances, they may look at the employees within an organization if they're looking at the facade program, which is one of the things that I'm going to talk a little bit about tonight. The facade program actually can get around LMI by dealing with slum and blight. Boy, those are some fun terms. But that's, again, one of the things that you have to check the box with the federal funds that you're meeting. There's $21 million available to non-entitled communities, prohibit duplication of benefits. So, you can't be applying to the CDG and then turning around and doing another round of CDG with the state. Has an open application period, so we're not, Dan and I were, pardon the reasoning, we're trying to rush on an application to do on the 22nd. So, we're not dealing with a short deadline. But the thing to keep in mind is that the funds have to be drawn down by 2020. And so, time goes by really fast, and it's unreimbursed. So, you need almost projects that, that are in the pipeline somewhat to be thought about. So, what I did with each of the seven allowable project areas is I went through the slides and I pulled what I considered to be headed the most important information for each of those funding. So, public facilities, public spaces, you can see what would be involved there. The big thing to realize there is it cannot be used on buildings where government is conducted. So, it is spoon city halls, even though it would seem like public facilities might be city hall or courthouse. So, those would be exempt. But there's lots of other things that can be done with public facilities and public spaces. So, I'll let you kind of let your thoughts churn there a little bit on some examples of projects. But the maximum award in this category is $500,000. So, that is a nice amount of funding to be able to go after. There's some public wifi access, some micro enterprise assistance. So, this would be supporting businesses that have five or less employees. You can do forgivable loans up to $50,000 per business. So, maybe you're hearing that you've got businesses that have some, you can, again, go back to survey results. You know there are some people interested in reinvesting. Maybe that's something that we can help you, help you with, get applications together to support a certain number of micro enterprises. Housing conversion would be taking something that's something else right now and turning it into new housing units. The commercial facade improvements, if you looked at it all, the state has a program that does facades, and it has kind of set numbers you need to go after. The nice thing about the facade program as part of this special funding is it doesn't, it doesn't have to be a certain number. You could say you want to do three and not 12 or 15, that's normally required. And it's up to $50,000 per facade. And again, you would have to do slum and blight on that. But again, that's something that's really in the eye of the beholder and something that I'd be doing your survey work on visuals. But again, we can go into those sorts of details if that would interest you. There's an opportunity to assist our local food banks. And then I mentioned the daycare assistance. And so, it really is, needs to be new units, and you can see the maximum award that's available. So, if it's a nonprofit, it's up to $100,000. And then if it's a for-profit, it's $85,000 per job created. So, hopefully this is helpful to you. Again, in our travels in your community over the last six months, I know a lot of these types of things are being talked about. So, the question is, are you far enough along in the planning to get through the application? We're here to be helpful. We're here to get the right people on the phone with you. But again, I've been at this a lot of years, and this is the first special funding cycle I've seen. Dan, you have some comments on that?
Yeah, I want to just ask a few questions before, on the benefit of the prepared counsel, that housing conversion could be second floors in downtown.
Absolutely, and that's.
That's what I wanted to think about, is second story housing downtown, there's money for that. And back to the original application process. This process is much like, one of your manufacturers came to you a year or two ago and said, hey, we'll apply to financial assistance, hear the applicant, hear the vehicle to get that money. It's still different than this. And so, we know that we can have an authority well and have a finance authority. That's where these dollars are really being shoving through from the front of the government. And the other thing I wanted to point to, there was some comment on the downtown business survey was, before, this predates us, but the Boone Area Merchant Association. It was a downtown group or something like that. We did hear about that. I thought I was laying pretty bones.
So, anyway, so we're here to be helpful. We'd love, I know it's more than just one phone call. We probably will have to have some multiple conversations about that. But we'd love to see you take advantage. You're not going to get the funds if you don't apply. And because it is unusual, I'm hoping that reduces the number of applicants we see at statewide level. I'll now bring you back to the front part of the report. I'll actually give you our Q2 report on things. A lot of this is workforce related, and workforces, all you have to do is step foot in a restaurant in any of our areas and be reminded that we have workforce challenges. And, or all of a sudden, suddenly better, checking out your own groceries because of the challenges we're having. So, I wanted to talk a little bit about some of the things that we're doing in reaction to that. And Dan talked about the BRE visits. So, he's handled a couple of those. I've handled a lot of those. And it's exciting because now they're starting to call us to ask us for ideas. And I popped into his office, I said, I just got off the phone with Esther. I just got off the phone with Lane. And it's just fun to be able to know that, that they know that you're providing this service. And we're doing our best to try in a very tough situation to be helping them think outside the box. And that's really, I know, is a driver in, in, in working with us. So, I want to talk a lot about our efforts on workforce. So, we're in the midst of some retraining opportunities. And so, we did this in the fall, just focused on Story County. And so, we expanded our efforts this spring. And so, we've included both Boone and Story County residents that are interested in learning something new. And so, we looked at our highest growth areas, which is healthcare and manufacturing, and identified three areas where DMAC could put together some training with us, get the tuition covered. And then we've been taking care of the wraparound services of daycare, transportation. I don't have a cell phone, and I need that. And anything that we've had available, we have a small grant in the state of Iowa that's allowed us to match funds to, to be able to provide support for wraparound services. We've connected them with meet and greets with employers. Your employers have participated in that. And so, we're continuing, trying to look at folks that are underemployed ahead of the pandemic, lost their jobs because of the pandemic, and want to learn something new. So, real excited about that. And as some of them start work, we'll be actually featuring them on some of our ads and the effort they've got to now get 40 hours a week. I gash, I have benefits for my family. And the whole objective is, we know strong families make for strong communities. And so, in the fall, we had a woman who lived in a homeless shelter. And within a month of working, one of our manufacturers took her and her two children out of the homeless shelter and was able to rent an apartment. So, you know it makes a difference. And so, we're actually continuing to figure out how can we keep this going because we know this, the need isn't going to end once our grant comes down at the end of summer, early fall. So, stay posted on that. Help us get out the word. If you have somebody that's struggling, have them get ahold of us. Have them get ahold of DMAC and we'll get them connected to the training. We talked about Homebase Iowa. In the last quarter, we received 39 needs. We follow up with a personal note. We have another email that's focused on Boone County amenities, living here, working here. Those are getting about 41% open rate. We're averaging on the job boards, you know, 6,900 is really between our two job boards. We have unique visitors that are coming through the Work at Boone at 4,000 in the last quarter. The other thing, if you're a Cubs fan, we love working with your local radio station, and they've been really helpful with us. It's one of the things that they get their largest listeners in is the Cubs games. And so, we actually have a couple of commercials run every time the Cubs are on the radio promoting Work at Boone, IA.com. So, we have a Facebook group that we manage. It's grown by 246 people in the last quarter. We've had 66 posts, some we've created, some that people have created, some of you have created. Thank you for doing that. Again, this is the world we live in if we want to get the word out. We had a June, a June in-person career fair in Ames, as you can see, the, the three employers that participated in that. And then on September 14th, we're going to be actually having a career fair at the Cabot Stone End, featuring Boone employers on your behalf. And so, just decided, it's really hard to get our job seekers there. We're going to push hard in the fall and try again. So, that'll run during the day on September 14th here in Boone. And a manufacturing luncheon. Debbie Durham came up, spoke to our manufacturers, really shared really hard data, what's going on with job openings, why people aren't working, things we can be doing. The state's got a new initiative called Manufacturing 4.0. We were one of the first areas to hear the details of that. We'll continue to provide information to our manufacturers. It's really about how do they mutual and keep current and support each other. We had Egg Certain Lake, Natchoto, and Polaiait all participated. We actually had Debbie here ahead of the event to actually tour Egg Certain. So, again, we're going to look for opportunities to connect your, your industries. Folks, they need to know it would be helpful. And then we also are doing some email marketing as it relates to your sites here in Boone. So, we did three emails in the last quarter to almost 1,400 site selectors with an open rate of 10%. And you can see where we're, we've never been a workforce lady you don't like. So, we continue to market to them, and only occasionally do they ask to be taken off of our list. So, you can see we sent two emails the last quarter, and you can see the number of contacts we heard and, and the number of open rate there. So, there is no magic way to solving this, but you got to be engaged, you got to be trying things. And we're always open to your ideas. If there would be something that would be helpful, something you'd like to see, that's our report. What can we answer for questions?
I know you said on your survey that you didn't dive down into specifics on a lot of those questions, but I know, I'm sure we've done these in the past. I was just kind of interested in the technology infrastructure portion.
Yeah.
What types of things are the businesses looking for? Is it just broadband? Is it something else?
It's productivity. It's actually a service of broadband.
Another thing I would be interested to know, when you do your next round of surveys, we've got a lot more activity at the Reed space, a lot of live events. It would be interesting to see if that has influenced perception one way or the other in what you, when the data, if that's, I know this was pre any of those things happening.
So, I believe in our contract, we're scheduled, I think, for kind of a satisfaction level survey coming up this fall. And so, never got to actually see what's in there. But I think we should maybe ask some questions regarding that as it goes out. Because that'll have a broader reach than just the downtown. So, I'll make it down to that so we can make sure we get that included. Again, validate, you see your investment. Did you take care of? Thank you. See, I should come in while I can job. So, anyway, thanks for that, that insight. And as we prepare the full survey, let's get some questions like that around, things that are important to you to make sure that your investments are meaningful and maybe a difference.
Let's allow any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Hey, is that Dan any part of the rules?
I would just simply say that you're really curbing up the whole Cubs thing. I'm from almost there, but then this makes sense now. I would generally say things are really, really good. You know, the more people we plug into, the more people we engage here in, in, the better the search you can provide that to use as a governing body. And so, if you're not sure you're on, why don't you actually talk to Brenda, Dan, or just call over there? Please do, or give it to Bill. We're happy to do it here. It's, it's easy. We've got a daycare provider, it's a startup. I'm not sure that all the things will come together, but on the way, I just left my desk. I said, I'm going to Boone over there. I ran over here and looked at two or three sites. I grabbed some phone numbers off of a real estate sign. I went back to the office. So, it's, it's easy to get here. And so, and we have one version to go over here for a meeting, have a meaningful conversation with any of you, anybody else you think we should connect with, do a better job than we have. So, with that, I'll stop. Once again, say thank you for your time and consideration this evening, and we'll see you conversely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public attorney involved their annexation property located at Oracle Way's corner of Northeast, except personally as shown on my survey as described below. Do you have any public comments on that? Written on us? That was public attorney's call. Page number four, reporter standing committee's A policy administration DJ.
Go report.
Public safety Stephen.
Public safety Stephen.
May have warm.
Okay, yeah.
All right. Come on.
Economic Development Committee, Ray.
Just one quick update. I know you saw the press release in KWB-G last week, but officially announced that the chamber and CDP agreement is settled. Official separation papers have been signed. All financial and material needs have also been debited accordingly. So, now that is resolved and forward. Both organizations have everything they need moving forward, and both organizations have financial means to get off off the ground. So, point one. Thank you, everybody.
Next, Department of Public Works, Billy Fish is gone this evening. Finance option, Andrea.
Yeah, we had a situation where we were issuing mobile food truck licenses to vendors at the Boone County Care. And for Jim's opinion, they're not allowed to do that, so we won't be refunding those licenses to those that would like them. If they are doing other events in Boone, well, we won't refund those, of course, but those that just got licenses for the care specifically, we will issue refunds.
What's the reasoning?
State laws is that we cannot enforce that regulation on the fairground. This is the location itself, right? Just because it is the fairground.
Cities Attorney Jim.
Just have a couple of things. Last week, we did, the right hand received a petition from the Boone County Board of Supervisors, whereby the Air Stevens, Stephen, or Granger District 137. We submitted that to our insurance carrier, obtained a 45-day extension to respond to it. Meanwhile, they're looking into whether or not they would provide defense. And number two, whether or not they have any coverage. So, once I hear back from them about that, we'll let you know. Secondly, in the consent agenda is the annexation. We began that because a developer was wanting to get Boone made. All along, we realized that the portion that is included in our minutes does in fact create an island. And we were going to have to address that at some point before it's going to be finalized. And so, the process where you have an involuntary annexation, even if it's a portion of a voluntary one, is very complex. So, today I've talked to the owners of the island property, and they have agreed to voluntarily annex into the city of Boone. And it's the property where the tower is located. And so, so I'll come back when they revise the resolution to schedule public care, and I don't want to spend parts of those things. But we should be able to get that done in another month or month and a half and annex all of that. There's, the only opposition we receive was from Boone County, who told us it created an island, which is something we already do, we already planned. So, we'll get that done relatively shortly, and that ground can hopefully be developed. That's all I have. Thank you.
Director of Public Works, John Rouse.
Yeah, John, I've got islands. What can I drive doing? This is nothing. Doing some suit patching, get South Marshall done. We have the road in front of the new mall, certain mall done. We're doing the eighth and green apartments lot right now. There's, in the apartment, there's like sidewalks and parking stalls, and probably even the lights start to fall. So, we put the lights down. We're taking those out. We're just going to make it flat surface. We're hoping that should be coming for a couple of days, a little over a couple of days. Streets we've been, we're giving this town a facelet for puffer. And with your permission, I'd like to hold off on a mosquito spray right now with the drought. Really not having a lot of bug issues unless you guys curb things. There's really no need to spray here until we just want, just want you to do that. All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then McGinn or Engineer Bill. Public safety Chief Ab.
Yes, Your Honor, tonight I have an alcohol license request through the Boone Chamber for the first Thursday of Puffer Billy, and it'd be a new license. As you'll see, the second part, it'll require two motions as a transfer. And basically, it's just an ease, easy way to do it through the Iowa Alcohol Bureau. So, the first request would be from council to, for a new alcohol license for the Boone Area Chamber of Commerce.
Second, all the roll.
Sines.
Yes.
Marmen.
Yes.
Pickpuff.
Yes.
Stucker.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Burr.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
The second item would be is after their Thursday event, they will transfer the license up to the event site at Ninth Street, and I would need a motion to approve that.
So, move. All the roll.
Marmen.
Yes.
Pickpuff.
Yes.
Stucker.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Burr.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Sines.
Yes.
And I'd entertain any questions for the fire department? Otherwise, thank you.
Thank you. Chief Lee Will.
No report, Your Honor.
City Administrator Bill.
Thank you, sir. My first item is the wine style project at the water treatment. Thank you, sir. My first item is the uh lifestyle project out of the water treatment facility. As you know, uh, we already accepted bids, we accepted the little bit. Twenty five thousand four thirty four from Long Yang Painting, and the fact that there's a contract uh. And a resolution for you to approve. There'll be some minor repairs to that facility as well as repainting it. Uh, it will not come offline, or will affect uh operations out there at all. So I'd need most of the boom that.
Second. Call the roll.
Pick back.
Yes.
Stacker.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes. Okay, second one.
Is the resolution for uh the American Rescue Plan? City councils are required to approve the resolution, uh, this is basically the house cleaning part of it. So that we can request the money. Uh, we have, staff has looked at some areas to use that money, I think the total of one point seven. First part is half of that, which we can get this year, then uh we have to wait, I think, another year to get the rest of it. So the total of one point seventeen million dollars. Projects that we have talked about, at the staff level at least. Uh, there's a lot of strings, as you know. We've, we have got in, we've gotten some uh information from Senator Corrie, as well as Fox Engineering. That we may be able to use some of the money if council so chooses on the U V project that's been bid. And we have money in the bank for that, but there are some things that were not included in it when we applied the C D T grant that's over in the above. Uh, as for example, an extra hundred fifty three thousand for construction cost. Hundred forty seven thousand for engineering costs, which can be used as well as a few other minor things for a total of three thirty seven. So that could be used if council so chose. There's another project over in West Boone on South Main replacing water lines. That project has been on our radar for several years, and it keeps getting kicked, getting kicked back because of things that are happening at the plants. That the money's gone to, particularly on wastewater, so that is another project that you could consider. Uh, out at the water treatment facility, we have what we call a backflower that is needed to run the facility. Uh, when the facility was built, it put in place for two of them, but they only put one in. That is as old as the plant is, that's a two hundred thousand dollar project or so, so. We think that we could possibly use the money for that as well. Uh, I think we can use some of it uh for water sewer replacement on the West Park and South Marion payment project. As you know, what was presented to you uh, that's been a couple council meetings ago, on what our plan is. For that bond in, I think, twenty twenty three, uh, so we could use some of the money for that. Uh, so those are some options for council and mayor to consider. Staff would need some guidance. Doesn't have to be tonight, we can bring it back here, but those are the things that we are thinking. That we think qualify for the, for the requirements of receiving that money.
I, I would also strongly urge to restore the infrastructure because of the unknowns on the fallbacks. There, there's a lot of debate right now going on of what qualifies and what isn't, and what's safe and what's not. Federal government has the ability to request a payment in a certain timeframe if they find it violation.
So. That would require at some point, if they didn't like what we spent on, the possibility of an audit. We're already dealing with FEMA under H O, and we're still dealing with them, two projects. Still not gotten anything back from, I'm gonna submit it one, but we're, there. It just seems here, every step, there's more paperwork, there's more tasks that we have to do. Those have been very frustrating, but we're still working on it.
Is that, I mean, I think it should be upgraded. County is suing this over, qualified for this, case that's going.
We could look at that. It is, it is sewer replacement, right?
So if it doesn't go up well, and the insurance doesn't cover it, we could use that one for that.
I think that's a possibility.
Uh, what question?
Sure.
West Boone water lines, uh, we've been, you said we've been pushing it up, we have an estimate on the cost now.
We, here's what we did for this fiscal year, we budgeted thirty five thousand for design, J R has already been in contact with S E H. Uh, to give a, a cost estimate on what they would charge us for design, so we are starting to work on that. And we had every intention of budgeting for it in the fall for fiscal year twenty three. But it's just one of those projects that we think qualify because it's, it's a replacement of, of water lines. Now, I think there was some, adding some water lines, is that correct?
For most part, add new to Marion's.
Now, that part may not qualify because it's new, but majority of it would. So I thi- I think it's a good possibility that we have several projects. Uh, that will take a little bit of time, so to speak, to help with those projects.
Uh, yeah, just to make it easier on everybody else to reduce the amount of friction and headaches later on. We have plenty of projects that we're trying to qualify for, so.
So what I'm getting at is infrastructure water sewer replacement, for the most part.
Okay.
And what we rely against, Senator Correa, I would say, has been very, you know, we've worked with them in the past, they've moved on C D T grant. They've been very helpful, uh, so what we can shoot down some questions as well as we move forward is. We tried to develop our plan, though. We'll stick with the replacement center of that, so three twenty four would qualify, I'm getting it, that would be a good project. Um, as well as, I think we can use some of it on the U V. That would clear up some money that we already have in the bank for that project, if you choose, we could do that as well. Chair, on the West Park and South Marion project, will there be water sewer that can be replaced? It's already there, are there gonna be replacements on that? I'm assuming it might on this lot, without a design, but.
Soon, I think, but water, we can look at it.
Alright, well, we, we will concentrate on replacement of water sewer for our projects. And I'll, you have questions on that before I move on?
Be a shame that I can use it on a project where the county's suing their own taxidermy. Yeah, that's the department.
I, it was just a question. And the thing on this money too, there's a, there's a pretty quick. I'm mistaken, like a pretty quick turnaround on when you gotta spend this money. If I remember twenty three.
Twenty twenty four is when all my best. So.
So we need to move there.
So these are all issues where it could double ready, more or less.
I, I think the Main Street project is ready to go, we're designing it, I mean, you could. If you wanna use this money, we could, you, we could start that project once it's designed prior, it'd be a budget amendment, but. We could, I, we could use the recovery money for that project. It actually started maybe in the spring. Require a budget amendment for my span, but.
Right now, it's, I mean, and with this, uh, infrastructure bill coming out in Congress. Everyone's, everyone's really worried about spending this money on infrastructure and then getting more money for infrastructure that we can use. So they're advising you to take, you know, focus on your old stuff, fix it. And don't count on that money, but when that money comes, it's gonna have more than not the same strength attached to it. So we're gonna be doing this all over again.
We need to move fast because when that, all that money hits, finding utility contractors is something that's tough. Well, I'm like, so we've already reached out to start the design on the project. So, so we'll, we'll, we'll keep it moving, good. Okay, next, uh, six twenty eight story street auction, that's in the packet, there's a, uh. Excuse me, if I could take a step back, this American Recovery, those documents and the program consent. Look forward to the auction, that resolution is in the consent agenda as well. Uh, if you've had a chance to look at that, Terry, I don't know if you have anything to add.
Uh, I know that list is pretty kind of answers.
My next item is an update on six twenty eight story street. Uh, staff went ahead and, and had our person in there for a, an inspection. To see if there's any asbestos, good news to report is there is none, believe it or not. We've got the official report uh from the inspector, so we will not have that expense. I think if y'all remember what we spent on Garfield for asbestos, this is pretty good news. Um, so we have had conversations with De Novo on a demo contract. Terry and I had a phone call with them this afternoon, they're gonna submit a contract for us to review, for gender review. Uh, as the construction manager for this project, because it's fairly large. And um, we hope to have a contract to use for consideration. And De Novo, actually, some of their personnel will be here uh to talk to council on the August second council meeting. Terry, do you have anything else to add on that? Uh, that handout that I gave you kinda gives you a timeline of the demolition. Uh, the auction is, the salvage returns and stuff are set for August twenty fifth at five thirty, it's a Wednesday. Double Meyer uh auction services are gonna be doing that, because I checked with all the online auction services, that they, they. They're booked until after this demolition's gonna start. So uh, that's why I went with the live auction. The, Bill, like Bill said, we had a conversation with De Novo today, and kinda got some details worked out. About costs and how it was gonna be worded and stuff like that, so I think we're in pretty good shape. Um, there's also, and again, that uh, handout that I gave you is kind of a cost estimate, that's best case scenario. Um, worst case, uh, probably add fifteen or twenty thousand to that. So, I think we're in good shape. The contract comes in, uh, Bill can explain to you how we're gonna pay for this. But the timeline's pretty aggressive, if you, if you notice that, and the reason we did that is so that they can get it done this year and not fight weather. Because that's, that's a factor that they put in, it costs money, so that's why we're moving forward.
Yeah, so we're looking at a demolition completion date of.
Before Thanksgiving.
Before Thanksgiving this year.
Awesome.
We're looking at a completion date of before Thanksgiving this year.
That's right. My job to say possible. Council with the truth, and that's optimistic, with the deep here. Did, uh, councilman, did you wanna say anything about, anything else to discuss, or do we wait till then?
Uh, we'll wait, I can wait till August. I will say that our current budgeting, that Bill can answer any specific questions on. Is also coming out of our current budget resources, so it's not anything additional we have to look at right now.
I can cover that real quick. So we have uh, two hundred thousand dollars in the bank in demo. That uh, we've targeted, and if you remember the hundred thousand that you budgeted for this year twenty one for the downtown study. Uh, that, uh, the servant said that was not spent, so that can qualify, so we do have three hundred thousand. Uh, and Terry's numbers depend on that, uh, under and I're working on where that other will come from. Obviously, it'd be some general fund, maybe some L O S T because we own it. Uh, but at least the preliminary numbers are looking pretty good, I'm pleased with them, I think Greg and Terry are pleased as well. And we'll just see as we, if you guys decide to get De Novo on board, and they put out their specs, and then we get the bids, and we'll see what we.
We made, that's, that's what our target number was, so.
Mike, any other questions I can answer? Okay, my next uh item is an update on the I N I project. Uh, as you know, we completed one and two, so we're gonna start phase three. Uh, this week, uh, W H K S is doing uh, smoke testing, is that right, Eric, what's called? Uh, for that project, it'll probably be all week, so the area for phase three is western story. And pretty much north of the tracks. About eight hundred homes will be, will need to be inspected. And uh, we are planning on having a public meeting with the citizens affected. Tuesday, August seventeenth at five P M in the auditorium. Council uh, members are certainly welcome to attend. But, well, yeah.
It's your word.
August seventeenth at five P M. Okay, W H K, W H K S does a great job, they'll handle it. Staff will be there to assist when needed, but uh, the consultant at W H K S, yes, Jerry? Yeah, we're also gonna be making available ones and. Any questions I can answer? My last item is an update on the air handlers. They have been ordered, they're four to six weeks out before the contractors can put them in, so we're still gonna have a delay. Uh, that project uh, right now is probably gonna come in around with the. The air hand, and the contracts for men, and then some electrical work is probably gonna come in around thirty five thousand dollars. So that is half of what we budgeted for, for remodeling for city hall this, for this, this fiscal year. Uh, I think when we get that project done, uh, some of you, I've had a conversation with about the roof. Uh, we're still looking at that, we're coming to get an estimate, so obviously, until we figure that out. Uh, we won't make any forward movement on the other thirty five thousand for remodel, in case we need to do something with the roof. And that would require that we take uh. Going to reserve to do that, we don't have that budget this year, we, hopefully we can get it out in two years out of it, but. I'm not sure that we can, and I'll keep it by, it's a good example, back on the wall, and see where that's been. Uh, we'll get some estimates, and that does uh, as well include the fire department roof. We can find ways to take that out of Justin's budget uh, as we go.
Thank you, chief.
Yeah, whatever.
But uh, we'll, we'll, we'll get more information, and I'll bring that back to you. Uh, unless there's any questions for me, that's all my reports.
Yeah.
Alright, number six, consent agenda, are there any items on the consent agenda that you'd like to move, discuss separately?
Motion to approve. All the roll.
Becker.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Burr.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Pick back.
Yes.
And so, yeah, number eight, I have no comments, number nine, any council comments, chief?
I just got a couple things we forgot, uh, in the, we did the historical society structural study.
Thank you.
Thank you. And uh, it came back, Thomas, which engineer did that, it came back that there's really no issues. However, we are going to take some precautions, um, going forward with the demo contract, just to make sure. Um, we're gonna do some seismic monitoring and, and have a meeting with them and go through the procedures.
And this is relating to the proposed demolition next door?
Right, 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 um. Like I said, the auction was scheduled for uh, August twenty fifth, and once that hits. Um, we'll be posting it on the city website, I'll be sharing it via Facebook, along with some other posts on my council page. And council members will kindly share that information with everybody, some more information to get out there. While you're spreading it better off will be, I think, it'll be. There's a lot of talk about it already. Thanks.
Yeah, the council comments. The public comments, right, it's on the agenda.